The Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Commissioner Davy Jones. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Joshua, Chapter 1, verse 9, reads as follows. Have I not commanded you, be strong and courageous; do not be afraid, do not be discouraged; for the Lord your God will be with you wherever you go. So, Father, as we come today as a Board of County Commissioners representing our county, we just ask for your presence with us. We ask for your wisdom, for your guidance. And, Father, today we give you thanks for blessing this county, for blessing our citizens, and for blessing our employees. And today at this meeting, give you thanks for all of that in Jesus' name. Amen.
I don't have any shared comments today, so we'll go straight into the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agendas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good morning, everyone. And we have a public comment this morning from Donna. Please introduce yourself to the viewing public. And good morning.
Morning. I'm Donna Gershner, and I serve as the Finney County Safe Kids Coordinator. And today I'm here to talk to you about our designated safety corridor. I also serve on the Occupant Protection Committee for KDOT as a Western Kansas representative. So what they wanted me to do is make you aware of the safety corridor, which is US 83 to 50. There's four corridors in the state of Kansas, and what they're trying to do is increase the amount of seatbelt usage. The state of Kansas is seven percent below the national seatbelt usage. And we, here in Western Kansas, are sixteen point three percent below the national average. We are second to the worst, only to US 24. So what we're trying to do is get the information out there and get people wearing their seatbelts and hopefully save some lives. There's posters available at KDOT. They want our employees out here in Western Kansas to know that there's posters and put it up in your local business. And we also have information. Unfortunately, I brought you the ones in Spanish, but I will get you the English ones, too. But we just want you to be aware that we do have a safety corridor, and it's due to the number of accidents that have happened in that area that have been very serious and some fatalities. So just getting that information out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I have one.
Please state your name for everybody.
I'm Callie Dyer. I'm the Executive Director for Livwell Finney County, and I'm here today for a few updates. Last week, the staff, Beth Koksel, Heather Wright Rennick, and myself, we were in Washington DC for a training for our federal grant, the Drug Free Communities Grant. We were able to see, visit with Senator Robert Marshall and the staffers for Jerry Moran. And we just missed Susan Richmeyer, so we were happy to have that opportunity. Also, last week, ninety-three cases of Narcan were delivered to our office to get out in our community. So if you know of anybody that is needing Narcan, we will happy to dispense that to them for free of charge. I have to distribute to you as well, that came out last week. KDOT has a thirty million dollar grants available through transportation. Today's a call, and there's a few calls coming out this week. Shared this information with the city on Friday. It came on Thursday when we were still in DC. But would like to share it with the county because active transportation, safe routes to school for biking and trails and stuff is available. And if you all are interested, Livwell is happy to help in the city or the county if they wish to apply, so.
Do that to the clerks.
Sure.
Circulate, please. Does the Board have any questions or comments, Callie? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this morning? Good morning, and please introduce yourself.
Good morning. I'm Dewayne Schole. I live just outside the city limits. Was in here a few months ago. We have a truck issue out in the residential areas in the county. But it's mostly a trash issue, and it's getting worse. At that time, Commissioner Jones thought that it might be good to form a task force of some sort. And I didn't know if anything had been done. I hadn't heard anything. If this would be, if this is something that it's even coming about yet, or if it was just forgotten.
All right. Commissioner Jones?
Nothing had been done.
Right. I don't think that we have formed any task force with regard to particular issues. What's your location, sir?
North end of Industrial Drive, over in a residential section that butts right up against Industrial Park.
And with regard to use problems up there, have you contacted McKenzie Phillips in Community Development?
We've contacted Enforcement and Inspection.
Right, but our county officer is McKenzie. Are you aware of that?
No, I wasn't. I was always told to report.
Administrator, so.
Okay.
McKenzie, wave your hand for the taxpaying citizen.
Okay.
That's one person that you need to talk to, to start the process and follow up with the administrator. If you don't get any results, come back and see us.
I will do that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that this is the same area, same situation as the gentleman who approached us last month with the letter. Same area, same issues.
Well, we need to take a look at it, and they have been ongoing.
Oh, for decades.
Partly his concern though is a zoning issue right across the street virtue from you is.
That's another issue. They aren't following the ordinances.
It's construction material, so.
Yeah. He's permitted to park building material and equipment in there. Don't mind that at all. But the junk tires, concrete, crud, crap, and corruption, I do.
Very good.
Thank you.
Forward to hearing from you. Any other public comment? John, please introduce yourself.
Good morning. John Persista with Neighborhood Development Services. Palmberg Land Surveying Services is requesting to plat the VFF subdivision number one. The property is generally located at nineteen five three five North Big Low Road. Lot one, block one, contains four point nine acres. There's currently a home on the property and three other accessory structures. The property is currently zoned A Agricultural District. Since the lot is less than forty acres and does not meet the acreage requirements for A Agricultural District, the owner will need to go through the rezon process to have a residential zoning. The plat was presented for review on January twenty-fifth and met requirements. The Planning Commission did recommend approval at the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. There are two alternatives before you today. The governing body may approve the parcel plat, or the governing body may not approve the parcel plat. And staff recommends alternative one, approve the parcel plat.
All right, we're going to take this under advisement, and we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, which is VFF two.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Dante Thompson, Planner with Neighborhood Development. Palmberg Land Surveying Services is requesting to plat VFF subdivision number two. This property is generally located at eighteen five six zero North Big Low Road. Lot one, block one, contains approximately two point four acres, and lot two, block one, contains approximately four point eight acres. The owner plans to use both lots as residential. There is currently a home on each lot with several other accessory structures, and the property is currently zoned A Agricultural District. And the lot will be less than forty acres and does not meet the acreage requirements for A Agricultural District. The owner will need to go through the rezoning process for residential zoning district. The plat was presented for review on January second, twenty-twenty-four, and met the minimum requirements of the subdivision and zoning regulations. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the parcel plat request at the January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, and there are all two alternatives in front of you. The governing body may adopt the parcel plat, or the governing body may not approve the parcel plat, and staff recommends alternative one, approval of the parcel plat.
All right, thank you. And the Commissioners have been provided a memo from McKenzie Phillips with regard to VFF two, and have you had an opportunity to review it?
Yes.
Do you have comments on it before we ask her to outline her memo?
I do not have any comments now.
McKenzie?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Neighborhood, or, sorry, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So I just did want to outline a few concerns, environmental concerns that the Public Works Department did have. So on the plat, the surveyor did, wasn't unable to locate the septic systems on the property. So with splitting this property and not knowing where and how many septic systems there are on the property, it's a little bit of a concern. And according to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, KDHE Minimum Standards for Design and Construction of On-Site Water Systems, and then also our Environmental Code, any part of the septic system does have to be ten feet away from any property lines, as well as any structures on the property. And as I mentioned, we're unsure of the current number of septic systems on the property. So each home should have its own septic system, but with not knowing how many there are, there might be one on that property that both homes are sharing. And there was only one well that was located, and that's on lot two of block one. So we're unsure if there is another well. And if there's not, then there's one well serving two homes, and it's on the other property. So if those were ever sold in the future, that might cause some issues for that one property. And with not knowing where those septic systems are located at, there is a minimum distance of fifty feet from any private water well system to the septic systems. So those were some of the concerns that we had outlined in the environmental code. I'm here if you have any questions.
Questions for McKenzie?
That I'm unsure of. I provided all the information to the Neighborhood Development Services Department, and I'm not sure if it got passed along. I did provide it to the surveyor, so he might have passed along.
Let me see if I got this memo.
I didn't provide this exact memo. I provided him the comments in an email.
All right, we'll have to get a hold of Skip, and we'll find out for sure. Commissioner?
My question is this, McKenzie. It appears, based on the minutes, that you did voice some of these concerns to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Yet they went ahead and approved the recommendation of this to us. Am I correct in understanding those minutes that we had in our packet?
You're correct.
All right. The concerns that I have is coordination of work between both the county's issue and with Neighborhood Development, and making sure that each of these five things that are in your memo, the Planning Commission had a chance to review. And it appears to me that you raised these concerns with the Planning Commission.
Correct. They did not see it before the day of the Planning Commission, though. Yeah.
Okay. And they still unanimously approved and recommended these plats?
Yes. We just wanted to provide the comments to you as well, so that you were aware.
Well, I have seen two property owners share a water well with a common agreement, and I don't think we have any use restrictions against that. The sewer issue is troubling if they don't conform to those things. But I think it's a big enough area that septic could be made to be in conformity with our regulations. But not knowing where it's at is troubling. But I think that that's also a function of the Planning Commission and not oversight from the Board of County Commissioners. They voted to approve it. I'm going to recommend that we approve it. Commissioner Driz?
Since this is basically the overruling KDHE's guidelines, is there a fallback on the county? Something to go south in the future?
That I'm unsure of. Since they're already existing, and they weren't actually, like, put in, new systems weren't put in this way, I don't think that we would, but I would have to check into that.
We tabled, I tabled VFF one. Was there any questions from the Commission back to John regarding to VFF one? All right, why don't we take them up separately then? With regard to VFF one, is there a motion to approve this plat?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the partial plat for FC twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine.
In a little second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this plat on VFF one. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, with regard to VFF two, is there a motion to approve this plat?
Well, if the Planning Commission wasn't concerned about it, they have the same information we have. I would do that we approve what the Planning Commission suggested.
My comment with regard to your motion is that I think that SK Farms has had enough tragedy in their lives. Condolences to Skip and his family, and looking for a second to the motion to approve VFF two.
I'll make a comment. I.
Let me, I'll second, so we have it on the table, but go ahead.
I guess my comment is because of the ownership of this, or we play in, is this going to be consistent? Have we been consistent across the county? Or is this simply because we know who owns this property? I'm a little concerned with that. Are we showing consistency across the county?
Well, I would say we're consistent. We try to do what the Planning Commission suggests to us. They review thoroughly, more thoroughly than we do.
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that we've had the question answered. Larry asked a little while ago whether the owners of the property were informed of the concerns that McKenzie expressed to us, and Dante or somebody, can you address, or, Mr. Chairman, would it be okay if one of them addressed that?
Yes.
So I'm pretty sure that these ended up in the advisory comments that we send out to the land surveyor. And him as the applicant has been the only one that I've been in contact with and have contact information for. I have not been in contact with the property owner. Dwayne could speak to probably what he's told the property owner so far.
All right.
Dwayne is ready to speak to you.
All right. Dwayne Palmberg, Palmberg Land Surveying Services. The whole purpose of this, of these two plats was to transfer ownership from SKS to VFF Farms. Or, yeah, VFF Farms. So I know that the buyer is going to make sure everything is correct. So if they, we will, he will find the septics. If we need to replace them, they'll be replaced. With Skip retiring from farming, he wanted to get, you know, get the housing into where the farming was going to be taken care of. All right, any other questions for the surveyor? Thank you, sir. All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Chairman, and then to Dwayne's point, I understand what Dwayne is saying. I hear what Larry is saying about consistency of following Planning Commission's recommendations. But I, too, would have that question if this, if we are making exceptions here or if this is consistent with what we've previously done. And I don't know if McKenzie can address that or not.
Well, we'll call her back up and ask. McKenzie? If you would, touch on the consistency issue addressed by Commissioners Driz and Fishney.
So the Planning Commission, the Board has consistently approved the Planning Commission's recommendations in the past. Now, we don't see this issue as much. This is a unique situation, so I don't know if there's even anything to compare it to, to previous. In this case, it was just that these comments weren't able to be provided to the Planning Commission for them to review before actually reviewing it that day.
Any other questions?
Question from McKenzie. By Kansas regulations or law, doesn't it take a two-thirds majority of this body here to overrule the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think we have two-thirds that are opposed, so.
Well, we'll see here in a little bit.
First of all, I appreciate McKenzie's comments and how this might be a little more unique than other cases that we've had. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to approve VFF two. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Green light, sorry. Surely they can hear me. Everybody in the room can hear me.
Is your green light on?
My green light is on. Mine wasn't. I'm sorry. All right. At break, we'll get those plats. Next on our business agenda is the annual housing update from Danielle and Alicia. Please introduce yourselves and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Danielle Burke, Assistant City Manager with the City of Garden City. So I'm excited to be here before you today to kind of give an overview of kind of our annual housing update. So we've tried to do this over the last couple of years and be a little bit more consistent with that. So today, we're going to focus predominantly on the RHID tool. And Alicia is going to go through some specific projects. But before we get into that, I kind of want to cover some of the general economic development tools that we utilize within the city and the county, just to kind of set the framework for the rest of the presentation here today. So there is a very lengthy presentation in your packets. I promise we will get through it very quickly. We won't spend a ton of time on any of the slides unless there are questions from you all about specific projects that you would like to get into. So I'll quickly go over kind of the first few slides of that presentation, and then hand it off to Alicia Charles, who's our Assistant Neighborhood and Development Services Director. And she can kind of get into some of the project specifics. So in your packet, you'll see some of those economic development tools that are utilized. I will point out that the RHID tool, which for years and years and years has been referred to as the Rural Incentive Housing District, has been renamed to the Reinvestment Incentive Housing District. And I will just warn you that it's going to take a little while for us to retrain our brains to use that new acronym. But the way that that tool functions is still the same. It's still a tax increment tool to be able to, for developers to be able to utilize to put in infrastructure and then use that increase in property value to pay off the cost of that infrastructure over a specific period of time. Last year, when we gave this presentation to you, we also spent quite a bit of time talking on the Neighborhood Revitalization Program and that tool. That will be coming back before you in a few, at a future meeting, so we're not going to get into that. We're going to focus specifically on housing today. These are kind of the tools that we utilize. We broke it up into two categories. Some of these tools we can utilize on the housing side of the house, and others are more specifically focused on commercial and industrial projects. The two that I'll kind of highlight, because they've been utilized in the last couple of years, are some of those state and federal programs. So typically, we don't talk about these a lot, but the Moderate Income Housing Tool, or MIH Tool, is a program that the state of Kansas has. And we've had a couple of projects in the city that have gone after those dollars over the last couple of years. Sligo Station, which is a mixed-use development project, actually received two million dollars in MIH funds last year. So that project will be getting underway, and we'll hit on that a little bit later. There's also, through that program, Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. We've got a couple more projects in the queue that are requesting to utilize those dollars. So while you guys haven't necessarily seen those come through the Board of County Commissioners, it is a tool that is available to counties as well as cities. So that may be a tool that a project may come to you in the future looking to, looking to utilize. There are also some federal programs. So the Hunter's Glen Project, which I'm sure you all are aware of as well, is using some USD, not USD. Yeah, it is. Yes, USDA, I'm sorry, USDA dollars to get that project up and running. So there are some federal programs, again, that we utilize in the city that, depending on how those projects move along, could be available to counties as well. So we're going to quickly go through, this next slide is an articulation of the housing needs. Again, this is not any new information. This is utilizing the 2021 Chat Report, which is a project that is done every, hopefully, two years. We're kind of on year three. This is utilizing the 2021 chat report, which is a a project that is done every hopefully two years. We're kind of on year three, so we'll be updating that in 2024. That really articulates the needs within the community related to housing. So this is a snapshot in time. This is just looking at the current kind of gap within where the market is and how much housing is actually needed. So like I said, we'll be updating that in 2024. This is a requirement to utilize the R H I D tool, which I know you all have utilized in the county as well. So we're excited to get that kind of underway. So you'll see in that 2021 chat report, the number that they had identified there was just under 1,400 new units by 2030. We've at the count or at the city level have been talking about the city commission goal, which is 4,000 new units. So there's a pretty big gap between those two. And the idea with the city commission's goal was to kind of skate to where we think we're going, not just the snapshot in time of where we are now. Because that chat report didn't include projects like Empirical and things like that that we knew were coming down the pike but weren't quite here, so they couldn't quite do that full assessment related to those projects. So we're excited to have that new chat report done in 2024 so that we can capture some of those projects that are now coming to fruition. The next slide is just kind of a trying to show you if we use that city commission goal, 4,000 new housing units as about 200 units per year and front doors that we'd like to see come onto the market. We are not quite to that point in terms of actually issuing certificates of occupancy. So you can see over the last several years, we've kind of been in that 50, 60. And we got up to 80 new units in 2020, but we're still falling short of that 200 units per year mark that has been identified. The next shows you the permits that are issued. The reason we wanted to show you this is because it typically takes a little bit of time between going through the plating process, figuring out what lots are available, then going through the planning and zoning process to be able to even start the construction phase of these projects. And then ultimately, after those construction permits are issued, issuing those certificate of occupancies. And that's the that's the final step from kind of the city process to be able to say, yes, this is a new front door that we have available and on the market today. So that usually takes a little bit of time. But one of the things that this chart is starting to show you, you can see in 2022 that significant increase in multifamily housing and housing developments. And so if we're going to really move the needle as it relates to housing, being able to utilize that multifamily housing is a really efficient way to get a lot of front doors open at one point in time. So as we go through the projects, you'll see a nice mix between the single-family lots that we see all around town and some of those multifamily developments that are in the the pipeline as well. So the next few slides, I want to kind of orient you before we go through them. This is really just to kind of show you where those single-family and multifamily developments are happening within the community. So you can see this first slide is 2021. So there are a couple of those multifamily green dots that you see. But predominantly, what you're seeing are those red red dots and those red developments, which are those single-family lots. If you look to 2022, you can still see quite a few of those single-family homes. But what you see in the north part of town is a lot of those multifamily projects that are coming online that you saw in that chart before. And then same thing with 2023, predominantly those single-family residences. But you're still seeing some of those multifamily properties get those get those permits as well. On the next chart, again, this just kind of shows you the permits that have been issued over the last couple of years and those certificates of occupancy. Again, it's not uncommon to really see that ebb and flow quite a bit. This is really representing the construction activity that's happening. So we'll get into some of these specifics of the projects. But we've got a lot of these where they're kind of queued up and ready to go and just kind of waiting on the construction of those developments to happen. And we can only only get that done so quickly. And so you see kind of that big bang for the buck on the the multifamily when it comes to that construction side of the house. The next slide is just kind of showing you what has happened. The goals that are outlined in the chat report and then the goals that the city commission has established, just to kind of show you the differences between those three numbers. I think these next two slides are probably the two that are of most interest. That's what you have the big printout for because admittedly, it's it's kind of hard to read. Certainly for those in the room looking at it on the screen, but even on the computer. So we wanted to provide you with the full list of R H I D properties that are currently online. And this chart shows you when each of those are anticipated to pay off. So you can see over the next couple of years, we're starting to get to that point where those property tax revenues in full are going to start coming to all of the taxing entities that have been partners with this R H I D tool for the last 10, 15 years or so. So there are some that are inactive. There are some that have been approved but have not been but have not moved forward. But this gives you an idea of which of those projects are active, are moving forward, how many units have been developed in each of the each of the calendar years and when we anticipate those projects to pay off. And then finally, the other thing that we printed off for you is the map that shows where all of these projects are across the city. And so you can see some of those in the green teal color, depending on how it printed out for you, is are projects that have been approved by the state of Kansas. So they're moving, but they're in kind of those early stages. The yellow that you see are the projects that have been completed. And so we have a number of those throughout the community as well. And then the darker blue are the projects that are in process. So they're actively moving forward. We're making progress on them, but they're not yet completed. And then finally, we have a handful that are in red. Those are areas that have been approved for R H I D but have not actually moved forward to to start working on that infrastructure and those related costs. So that's kind of a high-level overview of some of the numbers and statistics. I'm going to invite Alicia up here to kind of go through some of the specific projects with you. And at the end of the presentation, a lot of these are obviously in the city, but she's also going to cover some of the R H I D projects that are underway in the county as well and some of those that are using some of those other tools. So with that, I will pass it off to Alicia.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Alicia Charles, Assistant Neighborhood and Development Services Director. I'm going to quickly go through some of these active and in-progress R H I Ds. If you have questions, feel free to stop me, but there's quite a few, so I'm going to get through them kind of quickly. Going to start out with Chapel Heights Edition. They currently have five phases that they are working through, which is a total of 276 units. So they do have one set of duplexes in the development. After they started building those, they decided that they wanted to move more towards single-family. And then getting to the next is the preliminary plat, kind of laying out all of Chapel Heights. So this would be all of the future additions that will come forward in in time. And then just scrolling down to the next slide is just a couple of pictures showing some of the houses that have been built within Chapel Heights. Some very recent, if you see the snow, these are pictures from our last snow that we had. Getting to Sunflower Crossing Edition.
Excuse me, sir.
May I ask her a question?
You sure can.
Before we move on to a different project. My observation in Chapel Heights, that we have a number of houses, smaller square footage, smaller or lower value, I would assume to try to get the first-time homeowners in. And we've got some others that are a little bit more expansive and so on. Is that is that by the the builder's desire of what to build or what's driving the difference? And I'm not I'm not concerned about it. I don't I don't have a problem with it. But I'm just wondering what's driving the difference.
Right. So the the developer kind of laid out that he would go from smaller houses to the larger houses. As you get into the Phase Five, these are much larger lots. So the developers are just picking up what lots are available. I will say the lots in Phase Five are much larger than what's in Phase One or Two. So your typical single-family home lot is about 6,000 square feet. You get into Chapel Heights Five, they're about 8,000 to 9,000 is how big their lots are.
Thank you. Here's the loaded question while we're taking a break in your presentation. The city commission made a goal of 3,000 homes by 2030. What, if anything, should we be doing as the Board of County Commissioners to assist in reaching that goal?
So I think it's just getting the information out. Staff has had a couple of meetings with developers just to get them to understand the true housing needs. As Danielle explained, density is kind of where we need to go to get those get those houses in. We're kind of missing that median range housing. And so it's just, you know, informing the developers, obviously, they have the ability to choose to build and develop how they would like. But just getting kind of the message out of we need density, which means smaller lots, smaller houses or building up like apartment complexes.
And Mr. Chairman, I I think part of it too, and and I know it's with regard to the subdivision that's being started near our home, is that county was not eligible for R H I D until recently. And so they either had to go through the process of annexing into the city or maybe not even do the development that they were thinking about. But I think, and it's not anything done by us, but I think now that we have that R H I D possibility for sub for developments, that that's going to help us assist in this project.
Chairman, I apologize for interrupting, but you cannot be heard on the stream, so I'm not sure what's going on. But if you could pull your microphones closer.
Mine's right.
They would appreciate it. Even Jerry, they couldn't hear.
Boo. Hear that one? Well, my comment is is that I want all of us to be aware of the goal and all of us to be involved and engaged. And I'm sorry for the interruption in your presentation. If you'd get back on track.
No worries. No worries. Getting into Sunflower Crossing Edition, this is at Spruce and Sarah. So they've done something a little bit different. They've got 62 lots and then they've got of those 62, they've got 18 lots that are smaller. So again, trying to get in some of that density with A P U D, which is a planned unit development. This allows for lots that are smaller than what our regulations would typically allow for. And then it allows for reduced setbacks, reduced parking, which can help play in in getting some more affordable housing. So as of right now, they have 18 homes that are completed, 44 homes remaining left to build. And then we'll get into just I've got a couple of pictures of some of the recent housing units that are being built out there. We'll go to Hawkeye Edition or Development. This is West Emerson and Ninth Street. They have nine lots, I believe. I think one slide may have been removed. But this was in the west side of town. So what they did was they replatted lots that are on the left. So what you see in purple was replatted into a little bit smaller. And then what was in kind of the red is the lots that were already there. So what's in purple is what was allowed within the R H I D. And then again, just a couple houses that they have built. One you see is in black, a little bit more unique to what's typically built here in Garden City. Getting to Sunset Terrace Estates Phase One A, they've got 55 units, all single-family homes that are detached. So what you see in purple will be that first phase, Phase One A, that they have started constructing. They're a little bit halted on the infrastructure due to weather. So once the weather gets back up, you'll see a little bit more movement. Getting to Hunter's Glen Phase One, this is the kind of first multifamily development that we have. There's 23 lots total and they consist of fourplexes and duplexes. So if you've been out there to see, they they have some people that are moving into some of these fourplexes. And then you'll continue to see some of those future phases come come through. So again, getting just a couple of pictures of the duplexes and the fourplexes. Each fourplex unit has one garage and then they've got parking in the front as well. East Cambridge Square Phase Three has 48 lots, all single-family homes that are detached. And then again, just a couple of pictures of those homes. Lost River Edition Phase One is 37 units, all single-family detached homes. You may have seen a little bit of movement on this and you will continue here shortly in the future. Now going through the completed R H I Ds, I will just quickly go through these. We've got Notting Hill, the Reserves at Prairie Ridge One and Two, Pioneer Road Estates and Clarion Estates. And then one of the first completed multifamily is the Northborough First Edition replat. So there's 10 lots, all consisting of duplexes, and so a total of 20 duplexes. This is leading up into Hunter's Glen. So it started out in Northborough and then it's kind of gone into Hunter's Glen. Milestone Edition was just completed within the last year. They had six units out there. And then Maggie's Edition was just recently completed within the last couple of months, the last unit remaining. And then I'll get into the non non R H I D residential development. So you'll see some of these were the ones that started. East Cambridge Square Phase One started before R H I D was available within the city. And then we've got Pheasant Valley Third Edition replat. These are very new townhouses. As you can see, the garage is on the bottom. They've got the living units on top. And then there's Eagle Crest Edition, which are condominiums. Inactive R H I Ds, we have just a a few of those. So these are R H I Ds that have been through the entire process, development agreement, but the developer did not proceed. So that would be Hampton Second and Third Edition and then Columbus Edition.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Help me understand just a little bit on the R H I D. And I'm on the Hampton screen here for right now on my computer. But and it said the wording is the developer did not proceed. So if another developer wants to come in, do they have to start the entire process over? Or is since they've been through the process on this, does the new developer just pick up from where they were?
So it would it would kind of just depend on the developer's choice. Some of these that haven't started whatsoever would probably go through the R H I D process again, going through the public hearing portion and the new development agreement. Our development agreements have like a five-year clause. If you don't build, then it's kind of inactive. So we would want to reactivate that R H I D and just give the taxing entities the notice again.
The context of my question is whether there was any incentive for a new developer to step in or not. It sounds like they would just basically have to start over if if enough time has left.
Yeah, it would just depend, you know, we've got some developers that choose to go with exactly what they wanted and some may want to change it just a little bit. And then it would just depend on, you know, what their agreement states if if they're allowed to use the same infrastructure plans and plots and things like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anticipated R H I Ds for 2024 and housing developments. We've got the Montoya Edition, which is a potential of 11 lots. They would like to use a P U D overlay for some reduced lot sizes.
What's P U D?
Planned unit development.
And is that more doors per acre?
You are it's a minimum of two acres to do a planned unit development. Again, it allows you to house smaller lots. You can do it in any of the R one, R two, R three zoning districts, which are single-family to multifamily, just getting some more density in versus the 5,000 or 6,000 minimum lot size. Sligo Station, as Danielle touched on briefly, they received $2 million in the M I H ARPA funds in 2023. And they did apply for round three of the low-income housing tax credits. So we hope to hear hear back here shortly in February. Petra Residences, they have 348 units, duplexes and apartments. So this is a state-approved reinvestment housing incentive district area. And then they did apply for again the low-income housing taxing credits for 2023.
And where is that located?
This is just on Jenny, North Jenny Barker and K 156. Garden Garden City Apartments, this is duplexes and apartments. And they also applied for the M I H Round Three in 2023, 140 studio apartments. So this would be within the Starbond area. Some additional housing developments within Finney County and Holcomb. As you guys are aware, Country Acres, Mary Street and Farmland Road, they have three different phases. They have three different phases, which is eighty-eight units. And then Randall Estates, North Highway Eighty-three and south of North Shore Circle, sixteen units with a county RHID. And then the last one would be in Holcomb. This is Cambridge Square Phase Four, south of Laurel Lane. They plan to do fifteen detached, single-family homes and nine attached, single-family homes within RHID in Holcomb.
At least you're on that last one. That's out, where are they on the floodplain? Cause I know we were talking about floodplain map.
They, they are out of it. There is maybe just a very small slither on the, the very south of it, um, which will not affect, affect them.
But once they're established, if they redraw the map, then what?
That's probably a little bit of bigger discussion. Um, I don't believe they uh, are in some of that area, but we'll continue to look at it with them.
Is there a difference between the FEMA floodplain and the uh, Upper Arkansas River floodplain?
Yes and no. And I'll only briefly talk uh, floodplain with, with FEMA as some of you attended the Upper Watershed uh, meeting that we had. It's the very beginning, beginning stages of updating our new floodplain maps. Um, so they kind of put out a little bit of information. Wilson and Company did a, a study for Garden City. Um, and we have given that information to them. So I would assume within the next uh, couple of years that we will start to see some new maps come before us.
Anything else?
One more quick question. Um, all these um, examples of homes that were completed in these areas, uh, do you have any idea, are they already presold or are they on the market or what's, you have any?
That I could not tell you. Um, I do know some of, the ones that were just recently completed um, are already sold. I cannot tell you uh, if any of the ones that were completed previously, if they have any houses on the market.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks ladies.
Thank you. Next on our business agenda is a library request uh, from Pam Toller uh, with regard to stormwater drain system. And good morning and please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Pam Toller with the Finney County Public Library. Um, Paula Kimbrel wasn't able to be here. She's our board president, um, but she did want me to say to you that the board would like to thank the commission for the consideration of funds to make sure the library does not have to use funds that take away from programs and materials. The library is looking at being proactive in replacing the drain pipes that are inside the walls from the roof. And we are, we are on the third one that is now leaking and hoping that we do not have to um, do insurance every single time and be able to get ahead of this. These are cast iron pipes that have started rusting and are leaking into the wall, which goes either into the drywall or underneath the floor. So we're hoping to be able to replace those that um, aren't currently being replaced with insurance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm on, an ex officio member of the library board and so this presentation that Pam's making was kind of my assist, insistence. The um, the drain pipes, there are five left to go that have not been replaced. And so she's gone to a lot of effort getting bids and they, the bids kind of come from two places, a plumbing firm to put in PVC pipe and then another firm uh, to do the sheet rock and, and painting uh, to restore things. Uh, the, the bid total is seven thousand, ten dollars and fifty cents. Is that right? And, and I suggested to the board, the library board, let's bring this up before the county commission. We hire LSNS, Pam's employer, to manage the library, but not to maintain it. And to me, the uh, replacement of those pipes, they've, they're using their insurance uh, to repair one that's right now been leaking and, and has been repla, been repaired. But uh, for the future use of the building, uh, this is a, is a preventative maintenance issue that I feel that the county ought to take care of. And so I asked Robert if we could find seven thousand, ten dollars and somewhere and I can throw in the fifty cents, but I think the, the county ought to pay that, not the library. So uh, when the time comes, I would offer a motion to that effect.
I'll throw in the fifty, the two.
That's what I was, you read my mind. He's doing the fifty cents, so you're doing the two.
I got the two.
Well, I think we'll get all of it. My question to the administrator are, is this, is, is this a general fund uh, cost and can we afford it?
Uh, you can pay for, through the general fund. Uh, maybe an option to pay for it uh, through your capital improvement fund as well.
What would you recommend?
Uh, this early in the year, my preference would if, uh, to pay for it, afford it through the CIP.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uh, pay for the drain pipe repair out of capital improvement.
Seven thousand, ten dollars and fifty-two cents, sir?
And the fifty-two cents.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And before Pam steps down, do you want her to have them just mail the bill over to here? Or do you want to reimburse the library?
Say we receive the bill, we'll go ahead and reimburse the library for that.
All right, so forward the bill to Robert's attention and, and he will get his personal checkbook out and take care of it. You're very persuasive Pam, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you guys.
All right, we're gonna take a break before we take up our next item on the agenda and uh, we'll reconvene at nine thirty-five. Hang on, just filled up my coffee.
Is the county attorney building project and the consideration of the contract for architectural services, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, you have in your packet the architectural service agreement for the renovation and upgrades to the attorney's office. That document is ready for your consideration this morning. The anticipated cost of those services there were within the, within that budget doc, or that document as well. Approximately fifty, just under fifty thousand dollars.
Everybody had a chance to review the contract?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Administrator, can you identify the funding for all of this oper, both architectural and the work? I understand it's been identified, but for the public's consumption?
Absolutely. The, the contract for the architectural services will come, be paid out of the attorney's office. The estimated cost of the project, although not complete at this point in time, was estimated at about four hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. A portion of that will come from the attorney's budget that was set aside through their equipment reserve and capital improvement fund, with a hundred and fifty thousand coming out of the general fund, which you'll see in your transfers later on today.
Right. Okay, thank you.
County councillor, do you, have you had a chance to review the proposed contract?
I did. And I know that there were some question about some lined out items, but the, the last contract that I had that was sent to me, there are fifteen pages in the actual contract, the, and then there's an addition and deletions report that comes after the end of the signature line, that's just showing you what was lined out prior to actually sending the contract through. I'd reviewed it and Susan, the county attorney, reviewed it as well, and I believe the contract is ready for signature.
Any discussion from the commission on the approval of the remodel improvements at the county attorney's office? Need to, is it for my signature or the whole board's?
Yours.
Please include the authority for me to sign in your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the contract with and authorize you to sign on behalf of the commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the architect for improvements at the Fannie County Attorney's Office. And we've discussed the method of funding for this project. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our business agenda is the EMS, or excuse me, health department and EMS construction. Administrator, you have the floor, sir.
This is the request for the commission to formally declare the delivery model that they choose to utilize in this, for this project. You have a, you, you obviously have a few options here to do. You have the traditional design bid build delivery model, or the construction manager at risk delivery model. The reason why this is before you is that within the architectural agreement that you'll see following this, there is a place in there that the commission has cho, that, that the county has chosen to go with a construction manager at risk. That, at this point in time, could be changed, but in order for us to move forward on this project, we need to make that declaration. If you so choose to, choose the construction manager at risk model, it's about a sixty day process to go through as far as noticing up and sending out requests for qualifications, and then requests for proposals, and you go through an interviewing process and so on and so forth.
Right. With regard to the health department and EMS building, would Commissioners Pishney and Dries like to participate in that group as far as reviewing? I, I think the first decision is what kind of agreement do we want to utilize? And I think everybody believes a construction manager at risk, if I've polled everyone correctly, and I believe that's your recommendation, is it not?
Yes, it is.
So then, if we could have those two commissioners agree to hammer out the details of choosing the construction manager and making a recommendation back to us, hopefully in late March.
It will probably take a little bit longer than that. It'll probably be in April. Yep. But we did, we would need a formal motion today to.
First of April.
First of, yeah. Yeah. It is April first. Yes, it is. We do need a formal motion from the Board of County Commissioners to utilize the construction manager at risk delivery model for this project.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion that we approve the construction manager at risk policy for our new building for EMS and Health Department.
Second? Moved and seconded to utilize the construction manager at risk delivery model for this project on the health department and EMS building. Any further discussion?
I had the honor on Tuesday and Wednesday of last week to meet with that architectural firm and, and their consultant who happens to be a retired county administrator from Dickinson County, who's a friend of lawns, I find out, Brad. But I was highly impressed, and those folks have a kind of a different approach, but the approach is based on experience building health departments and EMS stations, so I was pleased.
Any further discussion on the pending motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll use CMR on this building, and look forward to recommendations for that contract in early April. I believe we meet the first of April. Is that on the calendar?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be April Fool's Day. That'd be a good day to sign a contract. I just, I think it's time to get.
It's your job.
I think it's time to get this thing going, get it out of the ground. Sales tax continues to be very special for all of us here in Fannie County, and so taxpayers have entrusted us to use those sales tax funds to generate this capital project. All right. Next on our agenda, with regard to the health department EMS architect agreement.
Yes, before you, you do have a, the agreement of, from Goldberg Group for architectural services for the design of this facility to be located at Ethan Mary. The, the agreement has been reviewed by county councillor with the sections and concerns that she had pointed out being removed and/or adjusted. So, subject to your approval.
Okay. County councillor, do you approve this contract as revised?
Yes, the administrator is correct, and I have reviewed it, and I believe it's appropriate at this point.
Any discussion from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that we approve the agreement with Goldberg Group for the EMS Health Department Building. I will second that. And I would assume authorize your signature, I should have added.
Is that all right with the second? All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. I'll sign it, as instructed by the majority of the commission. Next on our agenda is the sewer modernization construction contract. County Administrator, sir?
All right. This here has to do with the, as you're aware, the three sewer districts, as well as the north pump station. We, you do have before you the contracts for this renovation and upgrades to all those facilities in front of you. Once again, the cost of the project is just under four million dollars to upgrade all, all of the sites. The, the, let me see here, I'm looking for the name of the company, Middle Creek. Yeah, Middle Creek is, will be the contractor on this, on this agreement.
If I may, sir, this is a big contract, nearly four million bucks, but let's make sure the public knows that the source of the funds is the ARPA funds that were received in two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes, that, that was the majority of the funds. If you recall, we do have approximately two hundred thousand dollars coming from the sewer districts themselves.
That's a transfer, correct?
Correct.
All right. Where is, what's the location of Middle Creek? I'm sure we have it here, but.
Newton?
Newton? And they were the sole bidder, huh?
Yes, they were.
Any further questions for the administrator or comments with regard to the proposed contract with Middle Creek Corporation for the sewer district upgrades?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've commented about this project before, and I'll comment the same comment again, that this is not just for the present or the past, this is a contract taking us twenty years into the future. So when the time is, is appropriate, I'll be prepared to offer a motion.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Dries?
Just a question, Mr. Administrator, we reduced, we removed five pumps as a, I guess, is that, can you speak to that just a little bit?
Yes, there was a dr, a reduction from the primary bid of fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Those were for reserve pumps, or pumps to be placed on the shelf for the replacement, to reduce downtime for those pump stations. We had determined after the bid that we can utilize the pumps coming out of the ground as reserves and send them off to be reconditioned to place them on the shelf, so as pumps go down, we utilize those without interruption to service.
Okay, that's what I kind of wanted to hear. I didn't know if, we need a pump on, when those things go down, you need a pump.
That's correct, yes.
I was afraid we didn't have any reserve pumps.
We do not now, and that's what this is intend, that's what's, this was initially intended to do, but after rethinking it, we'll refurbish the ones that we have and shelf them.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, the scope of the work in this is substantial. Any further discussion? Sir?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the contracts with Middle Creek Corporation for the sewer modernization and authorize you to sign the contract.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve these contracts from Middle Creek Corporation for improvements of our sewer districts. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our business agenda is the noxious weed management plan. Is Mr. Hahn here?
Good morning. Please introduce yourself for the public and tell us what the plan is. Jerry Hahn, Director of the Noxious Weed Department. This is asking the board for the county commissioners to ask to consider their approval of the 2024 management plan for the noxious weed department. The noxious weed division is required to submit this annual plan to the Kansas Department of Ag. This plan outlines the work division to be done this year, and identifies where the noxious weed locations are.
Well, I assume Commissioner Dries will want to know where the hotspots are for bad weeds in our county.
Well, he pretty much identified that, but this document's basically a work in progress, is it not, that you just?
Part of this is.
Re-update where you're, you're seeing your hotspots?
Yes. This also kind of goes on with a eradication report that's also in the works of getting done too, so.
Just rest assured, rest of you guys, most of these nasty pasture weeds are in my district, so.
That's where they belong.
Where they belong, okay, thank you.
Question, Mr. Chairman? What are your chemical costs over the years? I would guess they've gone up, or are they kind of leveled off finally?
We did see about a three hundred percent increase in the last three years on some. Most of those have kind of gone back down, but a few have moved back up to about a hundred percent. So, we're trying to work with our suppliers to try to see what we can do to, what justifies those costs and how we can try to keep them down, not only for what we do for chemical cells, but also that we do for Roden Bridge, for spraying for the right of ways, and the state also, so.
You put the, out for a bid from suppliers or wholesalers?
Yes, and that's kind of goes along with the, we'll have, I'll have that report for you, and then the state also with what we charge per hour and, and for that too, so. Hopefully, the March fourth meeting, I'll have that stuff ready for you.
Very good. This is a little bit off the item, but the legislature is thinking about making the pear tree a noxious species. Is that going to fall under your jurisdiction if they do?
If they say that it does, then, then, then yes, it would be, so.
You know how many thousands of those there are in our county, right?
Yes, I'm aware. It will be quite the venture, but as, as anything, as they, as these noxious weeds show up, they are always evasive, they're here, and the best we can do is just try to control them when they become a nuisance.
All right, well, I, I just think it's a really interesting issue of how the counties are going to handle existing trees that were ornamental when planted.
Right.
And the eradication of those is not, is not going to be well received, by the way.
No, I imagine not. It probably falls under some of those where it looks pretty, but at the end of the day, they are. One of the best trees that we have that grow here is that Trees of Heaven, and they're borderlining that noxious tree also, and that is spread throughout Garden City, Fannie County, State of Kansas, and other states also, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Hahn?
One quick one. Mr. Chairman, are you still, and the question about cost of chemicals made me think of this. Are you still offering chemicals for sale to the people who live within the county?
Yes, we're still offering that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the 2024 Noxious Weed Management Plan as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded and reseconded, I imagine unanimously here shortly, to approve the Noxious Weed Program Management Plan as presented. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please note that all of us are signing the plan this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Next on our agenda is to hear from the Great Plains Development, Inc.
Yeah, there's, there's no one here for that, but the program income report for economic development from them, it's a semi-annual report that they submit every year. They submitted that for your review and approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve the semi-annual report from Great Plains Development?
Since I'm a Board of Directors member, I guess I shall move that we approve this annual report as presented.
Authorize Jerry to sign.
Authorize Jerry to sign.
And I would second that, and I believe it's a semi-annual report.
It is. All right. All those, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll sign the semi-annual report. Next on our agenda is cereal malt beverages. Ms. Munyon, County Clerk, this is your item.
Yes, sir, we had an application from Provecho Mexican Barbecue. It'll be the restaurant that's going in at the airport, and they've applied for a dealer's license for cereal malt beverage. We've done all the background work, the application is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the cereal malt beverage license for the airport.
Mike, thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve this beverage license. Madam Clerk or Sheriff, I see the undersheriff is here, have we had any issues with their, their cereal malt beverage before? Right, very good. My only question. Been moved and seconded to approve this beverage license, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on our agenda is to hear from Jenny Hamel, the Assistant County Administrator and Chief Financial Officer, with regard to establishment of an improvement fund for the law enforcement center remodel.
Good morning, Jenny Hamel, Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director. As you recall, in two thousand and twenty-three, the board approved the contract with H M N Architects to do an assessment on the law enforcement center. H M N is currently working with their contacts to build a potential budget for the necessary system updates and renovation of our law enforcement center. Staff is requesting that the board establish a dedicated capital improvement funds, capital improvements fund for the law enforcement center to allow for easier tracking of those funds that are appropriated and expended specifically for this project. We are recommending alternative one to adopt resolution seven, two thousand and twenty-four to establish a capital improvements fund for the law enforcement center.
Questions for the Finance Director? I have one. Do we have any funds in the capital improvement fund for the L E C, or is this creating a separate fund?
This is, will be a segregated fund, and we do have in our transfer list some funds dedicated to that as the next item.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt resolution zero seven dash two thousand and twenty-four to establish the capital improvement fund for the L E C. And for those who may not know, L E C, Law Enforcement Center.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to establish a capital improvements fund for the law enforcement center remodel. I'll note with interest that both moving and the second are the commissioners that have been working with capital improvements, and Commissioner Dries is the Chair of the L E C Remodel Committee. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the two thousand and twenty-three budget year-end transfers. Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director on our agenda, it has everything on it, not just the Finance Director, so please proceed.
The next item will have three resolutions, as well as the year-end transfers. The funds have been reviewed for, through the twelve thirty-one, twenty-three period, as well as those estimated that were remaining expenditures that were presented to you today for period thirteen. A schedule of transfers to the capital improvement fund and equipment reserve funds for future use has been prepared and presented. Listed, the listed transfers will complete funding for the Treasurer's Office security remodel, the Deeds Office security remodel, Attorney's Office remodel, administration building electrical upgrades, and additionally, funding is being set aside for the L E C repairs and upgrades to start that fund. Monies are also placed in the Buildings and Grounds Department to handle the scheduled and unscheduled repairs of county buildings, such as elevators, of which we have several right now that need repair. All funds are, currently have stable reserve balances, so no transfers will be requested from the General Fund or the Landfill Fund to cover cash shortfalls or deficits for operating shortfalls. Alternatives to approve the suggested transfers and adopt resolutions for public works and noxious weed fund transfers, two, suggest alternative transfer amounts and approve, or three, do not approve the suggested transfers. Staff is recommending alternative one.
Chairman, do you want to take those up, all three at once, or one at a time?
I believe separate.
Then I would offer a motion to approve resolution zero four dash two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt oh four, two thousand and twenty-four as proposed. This is a road and bridge transfer to the special highway funds of nine hundred thousand. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution oh five, two thousand and twenty-four for special equipment transfer of five hundred thousand.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt resolution oh five, two thousand and twenty-four, which is specifically a road and bridge transfer to the special equipment fund of five hundred thousand. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Go ahead.
Chairman, I would move that we adopt resolution zero six dash two thousand and twenty-four, which is the noxious weed transfer to Capital Outlay in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt resolution oh six, two thousand and twenty-four, noxious weed transfer to Capital Outlay, five thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I think we're going to go ahead and authorize the other year-end transfers as presented and take that up in one motion.
And, Mr. Chairman, just a question, so I am not scrolling through all that again, what, what's the total of that? Can you tell me?
The total amount of transfers would be five million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand.
That, that number that Jenny just referenced, I would move that we authorize the remaining year-end transfers as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we make the year-end transfers as suggested in the exhibit, now displayed for the public and as put in the motion by the Commissioners. Is there any further discussion? The total amount of transfers is five point four seven three, as broken down and as itemized. Hearing no further discretion, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
We're finishing up our paperwork up here on those resolutions, and would go ahead and ask Kelly to come forward and, when she's ready, to get recognition to our years of service for the employees. And the Chair comments here before we get started on this is that no little brief ceremony and no handshake is really satisfactory to say how much your service to our county, the citizens, and this commission is greatly appreciated. Keep up all the hard work, especially those of you who put yourselves in harm's way during our last natural emergency, and we continue to look forward to your years of service in the future. Just because you're getting years of service for a few years or a lot of years doesn't mean that we don't want you to continue, and we'll be mindful of that next meeting when we do our planning with regard to personnel policy and during budgeting in this two thousand and twenty-four cycle. So to all the employees here, we say thanks, and Kelly, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Kelly Munyon, Human Resource Director. So each year, Kansas Association of Counties recognizes employees, starting at eight years of service and then in eight-year increments. At that time, we also recognize our twenty-year employees. So this morning, the directors have the certificates and pins that were sent and the twenty-year gift for the one employee we have. Excuse me. So if we could have the Commissioners come up, I think the Director will say a few things about the employee, they'll shake your hands, we'd like to do a picture for Facebook, and then we'll have a short reception after.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Did you want me to announce all of the people, or did you want to get?
You can. Yeah, if you guys want to come up, I think we have a Director that's, the Directors will come up and say a few things about their employees.
All right.
And if you can stand on this end, please. If you can stand on this end. If you can stand here, the Commissioner will stand here. Okay. Maria, do you want to start? This will be for Lon's, we'll have you do his.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you want to start over somewhere? Yeah, do you need?
What are we doing?
The Director's going to say a few words, and then they'll shake your hand, and we'll get a picture, so, thank you.
Good morning. My name's Maria Castillo, and I'm the Fannie County Appraiser. The first award that I'm going to hand out is to Leah Ralph. She has been with the county for sixteen years. You're welcome. She started out as a field appraiser one in residential and is now my field appraiser three residential supervisor. She came to us from being the supervisor at McDonald's, looking for a job that where she could have the weekends off and have good benefits. Leah enjoy working, enjoys working with her residential staff and gets along with everyone in the office, and I really appreciate all the hard work she puts in. Thank you. My next employee is Shonda Salseda. She has been with the county for twenty years. Shonda started in personal property in the Appraisers' Office and moved over to cartographer position when our cartographer at that time was retiring. Shonda loves working on our maps. Shonda takes care of the parcel layer on our G I S county map. She can read the most complicated legal, and I know that when, and she will research if she doesn't know the answer, and I know that a lot of people trust her because she'll have the abstract companies call her up for help too. Thank you, Shonda, I appreciate all the hard work you put into our maps. And of course, she got to pick, and she wanted a globe. Viding for our cartographer.
Good morning, this is Shruti Chawla, Health Department Director, and we have here today Dolores. She's been with the department for thirty-two years, and Sandy is here, she's been her supervisor. I don't even know for how many, but I'll ask Sandy to say a few words about Dolores.
I've had the pleasure of working Dolores, with Dolores for about twenty-one years now, and she asked me to make this short and sweet, so I will do that. Congratulations on completing thirty-two years with us. We are privileged to have you on our team. Dolores's hard work is displayed every day, along with her adaptability, and we truly appreciate your dedication and contribution to working with the Health Department and the county.
Oh, is, I don't think we give him the microphone, oh my gosh.
I don't.
It's, it's almost lunchtime, no.
We'll just go ahead and skip to the reception. Steve Martinez, I'm undersheriff for Fannie County Sheriff's Office, so today we have four that we're recognizing. One, one couldn't make it because of some other family obligation, but first I'd like to invite up here Lieutenant Roberto Guzman. He's our jail, one of our jail lieutenants. He's been here for a little over eight years now, he's getting, he's getting close to nine, but Roberto moved up through the ranks pretty fast, that's pretty good to be lieutenant within eight years, so jailer, corporal, sergeant in the jail, and now lieutenant, and Roberto's one of those, you know, these tough times that we're going through right now as far as being shorthanded and stuff, Lieutenant Guzman isn't afraid to sometimes shred those stripes and get and work a shift on the jail floor and stuff, pull some overtime and things like that, so thank you for your hard work and dedication.
We got to do, are we doing all of them together for the picture, or?
Individual.
Individual, okay.
All right, next up, have jail corporal Levi Sterling. Levi is another one that has been with us for over eight years now, but again, Levi is another one that's not afraid to step up when we need help pulling overtime. Levi also does a lot of transport for us on his days off to help out with warrants, divisions, and stuff, and get the stuff that we need done, so again, Levi, thank you for your, for your service and for going the extra mile and doing everything you can for the Sheriff's Office, appreciate it.
When I don't want to stand next to him, I'll look smaller.
Right here? I'm going to block you both out.
And next up, I have Sherri Dinkle. She is our Senior Civil Process Server, and we recognize her for sixteen-plus years of service, so again, thank you for your dedication and, and your loyalty to the, to the Sheriff's Office, as again, we go through these rough times. If you guys don't know, don't know about civil process, they go out and they serve all the legal documents and papers. A lot of times, those people aren't happy to see these. Are, are deputies like that? Because a lot of times, most times, they're not delivering good news, but Sherri, her and her deputies go out there and still, still do the job, get the job completed that need to do, and sometimes in some pretty scary situations, so. So, again, thank you. Thank you for your service and, and for what you do when she supervises, uh, the other, uh, civil process server. So she does a good job in that and keeping things organized and, uh, making sure that those, uh, papers are always served on time because there's always deadlines on those and, uh, sometimes, so it takes multiple, multiple times. Try to find somebody because a lot of times they're ducking service. So, uh, thank you Sherri, keep up the good work and appreciate it. All right, and our last one is the one that couldn't be here, but it's Sergeant Daniel Ramirez. He's one of our patrol sergeants and he's been here for, uh, for 16-plus years. So, another one that's, uh, sticking with us through these rough times and, and keeps doing what, uh, he can do to help the department and, uh, serve our community, so.
Hi, I'm Skylar Swords with, uh, Finney County EMS and we have two employees that we're going to recognize today, uh, for eight years of service. And the first up is Jimmy Falke. Jimmy has been with us for a while. He, uh, has spent most of his adult life in, uh, public service, spent some time with the fire department and then has, uh, came to us as an EMT and has steadily progressed in his certifications and has been a paramedic, one of our lead paramedics here for several years. Additionally, he spends a lot of time, uh, working on making the department better and spending time outside of, uh, being clocked in to help out with everything. So we very much appreciate your dedication and commitment to service. Uh, next up, again with eight years of service, we have Crystal Zook. Also a paramedic with us, also started as an EMT and has worked her way up. Definitely been a challenge with, uh, balancing family life and the long hours that we have and the sacrifices that, uh, when you have a young family that you have to make in the names of public service. So again, we appreciate your hard work and dedication. Thank you very much, Crystal.
I'm Kaylee Jones, I'm the Public Works Operations Coordinator. Have one employee Gilberto Corillo, who's been here for eight years. I don't know if he's a 49ers fan, but yesterday was his 49th birthday, so good birthday. Gilbert's our shop foreman, just recently promoted there. He does an amazing job teaching our, our other mechanics and helping them progress to become better mechanics. He, he does outstanding getting equipment for all departments within the county in and out. Throughout the snowstorm we had, I think five graders down at one point in time or another, he got them in and out so we could get back to work as quickly as possible. He's always there, always willing to come in whenever needed and just does an outstanding job. I'm glad that, that I have him to help us out. Thanks Gilbert.
How you doing? This is Carlos Morello, Deputy Director of the JDC. This recognition is for Norma Ortega Vargas. She's one of our shift supervisors. She's been with us for 25 years. Um, she's a cornerstone employee that we have at the JDC. She makes my job easier, so I really appreciate her. She's not able to be here. Uh, she had some other family obligations, but I definitely wanted to recognize her for her, her hard work.
Can I get somebody else?
Yeah, you can. Good morning, Robert Reese. Jerry Hahn. 16 years, started out Public Works in '07 as a welder. 18 went to Noxious Weed Department, was applicator two. And last year took over the reins of managing and operating and leading that department. He's currently, uh, enrolled in the, um, CPM Certified Public Managers, um, program and along with about nine other, uh, individuals here from Finney County to help improve and further his leadership skills and ability. So Jerry, thank you so very much for your dedication and taking over the reins of Noxious Weed Director. Appreciate it, 16 years. I'm sorry?
Tough. Our next person that we're recognizing is Commissioner Lon Pishney, who's been with us for 16 years. Two terms as chairman, two terms as vice chairman, in service to our community in many different ways. A dedicated husband, a dedicated Fort Hays State University alum. I knew we could get something out of him. And I think that, uh, your years of service here have brought the commitment to government so very deserving. Lon Pishney. Picture for Lon. We didn't give him the microphone because Commissioner Reese didn't have his timing device.
Good point, good point.
And I appreciate you guys chasing after.
Is that everybody? Very good.
All right, well, we'll have the reception here shortly. If y'all can stick around.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Board and Committee Assignments for 2024. I have discussed these assignments with, um, management and I don't propose any changes, but now is the time for the commissioners to tell me if they want to make any changes to these board assignments. Otherwise, um, I'm going to appoint the people as set forth in the enclosure. Any changes? If not, that's the order of the chair. Thank you. Upcoming meetings and events. Madam Clerk.
Um, I have added the legislative coffees on here. Some election dates and then special meetings. We have a, uh, work session for the next meeting on February 20th. And then we'll have a special meeting at the end of March for election canvas, so those have been added as well.
That work session's going to be a big one because it's going to include the proposed changes in the personnel policy. So our department heads urge you to attend and have your input into that as well as, uh, commissioners going over the goals and priorities of our management and administration model. Once again, very important meeting for all of us. Yes, sir.
I've had a family, uh, situation come up where I may not be able to be here on March 25th, a special, uh, for the canvas. Does that require a replacement for me to be a part of that canvas?
Yes.
I know in the past it did for our normal canvas.
The remaining, uh, it would just be like we've done in the past. The remaining, uh, Board of County Canvassers would choose a replacement.
I'll make sure I give ample notice if I cannot be there, but.
Okay.
And also the person that you want to serve.
Right, right. But at this point, I, I'm questionable, so, yeah. I just want to make sure it was the same process.
Yes, we'll make a note, thanks.
Also on upcoming meetings and events, uh, this commission sponsored, uh, and helps support, uh, the showcases that are going to occur here in southwest Kansas. And March, uh, excuse me, February 8th is a showcase here in Finney County.
And those are on the next page, yes.
Well, I'm looking at what was not there. And then the second here in Finney County will be March 5th. Uh, just to put a plug in for the showcases and encourage our businesses to be involved and contact Joel Coles, uh, or Bob Kreitzer, uh, with regard to participation in those showcases. It's an idea that we can help grow our own and continue to have, uh, both, uh, professional and non-professional folks further their education and training with goals towards employment within our community. I think it's highly important for us and of course, this commission has dedicated tax dollars to making sure that, uh, this plan of showcasing our businesses to those seniors interested in working in southwest Kansas gets the look that they need. All right. Anything else on upcoming meetings and events? If not, then we'll hear from Mackenzie on development update, please.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. Uh, I don't have much of an update for you this morning. I just wanted to let you know we are meeting with, uh, the city and Neighborhood and Development Services this week to talk about the, um, agreement for, um, the services that NDS provides. So, and that's all I have for you this morning.
Well, I think that the impetus that I want to give you, Mackenzie, is that we made a, uh, suggested change to that agreement to them. I see it as playing tennis. If they want something changed, get it back to us. Let's get those changes, uh, brought to the forefront and, uh, to the various commissions for approval.
Yes. Agreed. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mackenzie before I dismiss her? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Quarterly funds, Madam Treasurer.
Good morning, Trista Joyce County Treasurer. So in front of you, you do have a report on quarterly idle funds investment for Finney County for the fourth quarter of 2023. So KSA 12-1675 allows the county commission to make investments of public funds. The county commission has granted that authority to the treasurer by policy. So for the fourth quarter of 2023, um, interest accrued for that period is $545,761.05. So that makes the total interest that we have recorded for 2023, $2,106,025.35.
My question is not to you, Madam Treasurer, but also to, uh, the administrator and Jenny, whoever wants to answer, but the interest income that we used was put into our 2024 budget to help reduce the adverum tax, was it not?
That is correct.
So, while, uh, wonderful effort by your office of managing idle funds, um, we have been able to reduce adverum tax for this year, 2024 budget in some measure because of the good work being done on utilization of our idle funds. Any questions for the treasurer? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, the county administrators report.
All right, well, we've been busy obviously with the, uh, various architectural agreements as well as the construction agreements. Those projects, uh, are now really in full swing as well as moving forward on the LEC project, the Law Enforcement Center project. Uh, we have, um, we'll be meeting tomorrow on that law enforcement project, um, with the consultant and, um, that has, and we've had to cancel the last couple of, of weeks just from mere fact that we did not have any new information from him. So, uh, this meeting tomorrow, we'll, we'll bring forward to that committee some new information on that project. It'll come back then to the board, um, on some possible directions on how to move forward. Once again, we engaged him to provide us with, um, a rough overview of the improvements and repairs needed to that facility. They have met with both the sheriff's office and the police department, uh, for possible improvements as far as office space and those types of needs. It will come back then, uh, to the, this board, in essence, how do you want to proceed with this project? Once again, we did transfer for this project to keep it moving, um, $1,350,000 at year end, as you saw on your, um, transfer packet for this project to keep it, to keep it moving. That's, that and closing out, uh, year end, uh, really is a summation of my report for today.
All right, very good. And the, uh... Mr. Reese, you're chairing that committee and hope we can have some recommendations to go forward. Next time. Anything from the county counselor?
Uh, I have a couple of items, I guess, to report on. Uh, I did get some additional information, uh, from our last, the tax sale has been a big topic for us as far as that goes. The court's system has now reopened e-filing. There is access to, um, court records, but for, uh, those cases during that 12-week timeframe when e-flex was down and they were having to be, um, filed the old-fashioned way, in person, by paper, are still being input into the court system. I have made contact with Ann McDowell over at First American to figure out, um, what we could do at this time. She's essentially indicated that, uh, we could do the new title search, but they'll still have basically, I mean, the asterisk on them that says, you know, we don't have access to all the information yet until they get that input in there. I did go a step further with her. She did indicate with, um, there have been some additional properties that have, um, paid their taxes that were on the list to go through this tax sale. I believe the number of down to for this tax sale now is 33. And, um, she did indicate that within about two weeks of when the court gets their system back fully functional, that she would be able to, um, get us back those updated title searches for that. So really it's just waiting on, um, the court system to get their records fully back up to everything being input at this point. I do know, um, clerk's offices are all, making modification to their hours. I think our clerk's office closes to the public here at 3 o'clock in the afternoon to have that additional time to be able to get those, um, cases input into their systems. So, um, there's some forward progress, so hopefully we'll have a tax sale sooner rather than later on that end of that. Um, the other question that was posted to me at our last meeting was about the Salina City Commissioners naming their own website as the official newspaper. I did go get a copy of the charter ordinance that the city of Salina used to exempt themselves. What they did is by virtue of the powers vested in them by Article 12, Section 5 of the Constitution of the State of Kansas, they exempted themselves and made it inapplicable to its Section 64-101 of Kansas statutes annotated because, um, that particular section does not apply to all cities equally. They can exempt themselves, it's cities of the first class. It's cities of the first class under that statute. The governing body of each city of the first class shall designate by resolution a newspaper to be the official city newspaper. What they did was if the acts and if those enacted by the legislature are not uniformly applied to all cities, they can exempt themselves out. Now, the county doesn't have that same luxury in that. They, as far as counties go, it just says counties. It doesn't differentiate between a large county, a small county, or anything of that nature. So I don't believe that under that same model that Salina used, that the county is going to have that same ability to exempt itself.
I think Salina's methodology is novel. We'll see how it works out.
Correct.
Anything else?
No, that's it for today.
All right. Any questions for the counselor or the administrator?
I have a question for the administrator. The continued complaints about not being able to hear us. Is there, what action needs to be taken to address our sound system here to turn the volume up for the folks at home?
We'll just, we'll just have to check into that and figure out what it is, what the issue is. We'll, we'll look at the controls over there and figure out what we might be able to do.
Okay, I appreciate it.
All right.
Any other questions for the administrator or the counselor? All right, we'll turn then to Commissioner reports. We'll go right to left this time, Commissioner Larry Jones.
I have no report. I've been out of pocket. Spending money lots of time in airports.
Commissioner Pishney?
Not a lot of meetings. I'll leave the KLPG to fellow Commissioner Dwayne. He has the agenda in front of him if he wants to get into detail about that. But I will mention, and I'm struggling with his name right now, but one of our Supreme Court justices has the initials K.
Jay Wall.
Yeah, was one of our speakers. And I did voice to him, county counselor, that the tax sale that we're wanting to do out here is being held up in Topeka. And he chuckled a little bit, but he also took it seriously that, yeah, I understand it's more than just the filings and so forth that it's affected. So I did put in two cents there to help him move that along. And I know he doesn't do the technology, I get that. Then I've attended chamber breakfast and I was in Topeka for a week and home for a week, and I'm heading back there again today to not only sit in on some hearings because I think that's important for them to see us in the room. And there was one about nuisances in Riley County and Cedric County. That was interesting, and it kind of gets back to the urban and rural designations and being able to opt out if it's not uniform from a nuisance standpoint. So some of the things that were referenced here with regard to official publication are being applied in venues. And then tonight I'll be at the Southwest Kansas Chambers. And then most importantly, this week is the Day of the Capitol for Counties on Thursday. And they have quite a number of booths, including Fannie County in the rotunda, scheduled for the rotunda on Thursday.
Who is scheduled to go for us besides yourself?
Kelly, we're, Kelly and I'm trying to think. Yeah, Beth Beavers, Susan Richmire and Kelly. And last year, Shroody was there and Paul Restly was there. And I think Shroody's busy with the health showcase this week. So I think it's good to have other people each year.
All right. Commissioner Reese?
It'd be kind of a busy period. Convention and Visitors Bureau, that board has already started to the process of appointing a budget committee to go ahead and start on that project for them. Fair Board, very, very busy group of people. They've already have the agenda for the fair pretty much laid out. They're adding a rodeo this year as well as tractor pull, and they are bringing another headline concert act in. And it should be equal to, if not better than, the one we had last year. Very ambitious group of people, looking for additional sponsors. So if anybody in the community feels the need to support our county fair, I'm sure they would be appreciated. I will speak a little bit to the KLPG meeting that Lon and I attended in Topeka. We had a great presentation from Representative Adam Smith on the tax policy that was passed by the, and subsequently vetoed by the governor, so we'll see where that goes. Dr. Roger Hamm was the Director of Property Evaluation Division. And he presented us a little chart, and I might share that. He has all the counties in the state and their effective tax rates. And I'll give you an example. The worst tax rate in the state is that residential is 3.14%. Their commercial is 6.82%. The least taxable is 1.27% commercial, 2.77%. Fannie County in 2022 actually fell in the bottom third, where 1.87% of our effective tax rate for residential and 4.07% for commercial. I know everybody's pet peeve is we pay too much taxes, and we do. But honestly, in 2022 compared to the rest of the state, we're not, not too bad a shape. So grin and bear it, I guess. The 2023 numbers were not quite complete yet, so I don't have that. But it was an interesting presentation, and I appreciate the commission to send Lon and I to the KLPG meeting. That's it.
All right. Mr. Jones?
I don't have a lot to report, Mr. Chairman. The little blizzard we had kind of interrupted some of my meetings, but did have a library board meeting, and we've taken action on, on one of the items that was discussed there. The library continues, every, every report is more and more statistically higher growth in attendance and programs and so on. So LS Ness is, in my opinion, doing a good job of managing that for us. And then on Tuesday, I attended meetings with EMS and the architecture firm that was approved this morning. And then on Wednesday, we went to the Health Department, and as I said earlier, I was highly impressed. They, those folks know a lot about what they're doing. So that's it, size of my meetings.
All right, very good. My report is this afternoon, I will chair the Sales Tax Oversight Committee. That's an interlocal agreement board overseeing the utilization of the 30-cent sales tax. And the last building to be completed on that sales, 2017 sales tax is the fire station number three in the EMS facility for which Skyler's Department has been involved with. We had groundbreaking yet, which was well-attended by all. And I am proud to announce that I'll make a report to the county commission as chairman of the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, and we meet at 2 o'clock today. If anybody has any input, let me know. I think that'll be a pretty short meeting because we've got one project left. Just a side note on sales tax oversight is that we got the signage and lightage done at Jenny Barker. And then as soon as we got the lights to actually working, we had a truck accident. And there's, it's back to a blinking red light. And I wish to report the city advises that we'll have that lighting reinstalled in hopefully six weeks or so. So that's, that's the good news, and that's the use of the 30-cent sales tax that was approved in 2017. And then my assigned committee board is Compass Area Mental Health. And folks, there's some really exciting things going on at Compass. And under the direction of Lisa, who's the executive director. Currently, there are 264 positions. We're still hiring. I have thirty-some positions to go. For the first time since the closure of the mental health inpatient facility here in Garden City, we will have an adult care facility in Dodge City. I know it's not in Garden, but at least we're not hundreds of miles away. And then within Garden City, we have the Juvenile Crisis Center for mental health crises for children. And this has been widely utilized and well-received to be able to help our children in crisis, including parents that may have mental health issues, to kind of give children and parents a break and a place to be safe and secure and provide necessary medical, mental health services to them. We continue to look forward to final designation as a CBHCC facility. That's coming in July. They wanted to move it up. And of course, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and so the target date remains July of 2024 for that final designation. This is huge for our community in southwest Kansas and the other counties that support and created Compass Area Mental Health. The last thing is, is that we continue to have during regular business hours, same-day service between the morning hours of 9 o'clock and the afternoon of 3 o'clock. We hope to get that expanded in the near future. So anyone in mental health crisis can get immediate care, same-day service care at the area mental health. This is all big news for providing critical health services within Fannie County and southwest Kansas. With that, I don't have any further report, any other comments from the commissioners, otherwise a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Hi. You want me to second that?
I do.
Okay. Second.
I've moved a second to adjourn. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.